Okay, call this meeting to order at 6:32. Before beginning, just want to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Daly, to his first school committee meeting. How's the first few days been?
So, everything's going wonderful. People have been so nice and kind, and we got a nice basket of cookies from John Bernard today for their office to kind of thank us and wish us well. Everyone, from the parents to the students to the teachers, everyone has just been so welcoming and receptive, and it's been great, I really have to say. And I was worried about the snow days, and then I think John called in a favor and turned up the heat to 60 degrees this weekend. It's been good, so, thank you so much. It's been wonderful.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll begin with public input. I see people here, but I'm guessing they're all for another presentation. There's nothing in the public, so we move on to the student rapport. So we have Julia Thorstad here, class of 2021.
So, for academic matters, students are preparing for mid-year exams next week, starting with a full day of school on Tuesday, followed by half-days through the rest of the week. The quarter also ends that Friday, so students are finishing assessments and catching up on any work due. On top of that, seniors are finishing college applications with regular decision deadlines for January 15th. The high school held their open house for middle school students and parents, introducing them to many aspects of the high school, including the one-to-one program, the school's facilities, tables showcasing extracurricular clubs, activities, and sports, among other topics of discussion. Voter registration was available to students on Main Street and about 30 preregistered. There will be an upcoming Chromebook check for all grades, and the student body recently saw a presentation by motivational speaker and singer Jesse Funk. For athletic matters, girls' basketball is starting off well with new head coach Bob Romeo at four and three. Track had athletes competing at the Winter Classic this weekend, with events spread over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They will compete at state relays this week. Senior Sammy Marisolos reached 100 points as girls' hockey captain from combined goals and assists. Senior Alex Vercolin was recently named in the Boston Globe's Players of the Week article for hat-tricks and two consecutive victories. And Brian McAuliffe starts his first season as the head coach for his boys' hockey team. Senior wrestler Stuart Glover gained his 100th career victory with the wrestling team at the Super Quad Meet that North Reading hosted on Saturday. For fine arts matters, Notorious will be performing at an a cappella show in Wakefield. Mascarz has announced their one-act play for Drama Fest, which will be the imaginary invalid, which they start holding auditions for tomorrow. The middle school theater program will be using the PAC for the Rock of Ages at the end of January. And for extracurricular matters, Student Council, for the first time, sent our own unified team of students to the Special Olympics bocce tournament. And the Student Council officers, including myself, will be having lunch with Dr. Daly tomorrow in power block to welcome him to the school and get to know some members of the student body. Model UN is leaving for their conference at Harvard at the end of the month. Adventure Club returned from their ski trip at Lune, where they enjoyed a weekend of warm weather skiing. Senior class officers are selling tickets for the freshman-sophomore semi-formal dance, which will be on March 6th. North Reading Robotics placed fourth at their state qualifiers, and many clubs are fundraising with restaurant nights. And for my student work, I brought a piece from world history that was following our unit on Stalinism, where we pick a fictional character and show how they demonstrate the characteristics of a totalitarian leader. And so for ours, we chose Bowser from the Mario universe. So, we had a whole life-size poster, but we donated that to the class to be used as an example. But this was what a friend of mine worked on in our group, and it was really good. And it also included an essay that the group collaborated on describing how they fit the characteristics of a totalitarian leader.
Trishane, thank you very much. Comments, questions?
Just strange question. So, how was the skiing? Did anyone say it was slushy, or that they were skiing in shorts or anything? It was so warm this weekend.
Yeah, I didn't go on it, but a friend of mine said that they were very, that they got kind of sweaty, because I guess they weren't maybe prepared for the spring skiing, but it seemed like it was a very fun trip.
Mr. Flanga, was here to chat with me.
Oh.
Yes, I did actually return last night on another trip. It was quite warm, and ironically, it was warmer at the peak of the month than it was at the end of the year.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Very abnormal weather patterns there. But, no, the skiing on Saturday was great. Sunday was a little bit, had some rain, it was a bit icy, but the lack of lines at the lift, I think, made up for the conditions. So, it was actually ended up, everyone had a great attitude, students were really flexible enough, and no injuries, which was always a plus.
That's a plus. Very good.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
Okay.
You can probably get that from Dr. Daly.
All right, thank you.
Yes, so we have no continued business, so we'll go to new business. And before we get to the high school, I think we have some special guests here from the Savings Bank, I'm guessing in the back, maybe. If you guys have, if Mr., so, just so everyone knows, at the last meeting, it was announced that the Savings Bank is going to help to support a new scoreboard at the softball field, or is it the softball field? Yeah, the softball field. They've been trying to raise money for a while, and they stepped up with a very large donation contribution to do that. And so, we asked that they please be invited to come here, just so that we could thank them for it. I think it's wonderful when the community works together, and I know the Savings Bank's a big piece of this community, and a lot of restaurants. We don't have a lot of businesses in North Reading, but the few that we have have been very, very generous to the schools and to the town, and so we just really appreciate everything that you guys have done. And so, if anybody else had any other comments, or do you want to take a photo and thank them? Or, yes, if you guys want to come down, we'll just kind of get a photo to thank you guys. I don't think, did you bring a large check or anything?
I wouldn't have had I done, but I brought a real large.
A real check. That's a connection to cash, though. Yes, of course.
Inside the game.
Yeah, we're going inside the photo.
This is for both the baseball.
Yes, with baseball and softball. Oh, with baseball and softball. I don't know.
I'll have to go sideways if you want.
Thank you guys.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you again.
You want to plug? I know the one like that.
Okay.
No, just the tab.
You can put a scoreboard up in the home.
You know, hey.
Tell one of the kids something witty.
Okay.
Do you just need to vote to accept?
Do we need to accept a vote? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to take a quick vote to accept the check, so if anybody is opposed to accepting $10,000.
Well, I will move to accept the gracious donation from the Savings Bank for $10,000 for the scoreboard.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to the high school presentation, and so I think Mr. LaPrat would like to come up and...
Thank you.
We have PowerPoint, or do we have?
Yeah, we have a slide presentation. We have a number of presenters here, so you're certainly welcome to move into kind of the audience side, if you would.
Can we make sure to give him, Michael, or somebody give him a microphone for?
Yes, oh, yes.
All right.
So, happy to present this evening, a bit of, you know, a sense of the number of things that are happening at the high school, highlighting three tonight specifically, around the idea of a more personalized approach to learning. You might recall, last year at this time, we really talked about the student at the center, and that was kind of complementing our present work at the time with the research collaboration for relational coordination, which was some support from that group with respect to our goals around personalized learning, and that was associated with our connection with Maple organization. So, tonight's program is really kind of three different aspects of that, a more personalized approach. As a quick sense of who's here, we have Ms. Carrigan and Mr. Flanga, fresh off the mountain, Mr. Flanga, Mr. Nosie as the freshman advisory coordinator, and Mr. Ledoux here to speak about how that's translating into physics. I'm going to let them present, obviously, when we get there. I did want to start, though, with a little bit of a background around personalized learning. I'm sure this is something that is very much kind of on your mind around the number of schools that are kind of focused across this in the district. But it really is more about the how than the what, I think, in providing the best learning opportunity for students. It focuses on these kind of six realms, learner profiles, personal connections, competency-based progression, technology, personal learning paths, and flexible learning environments. And as we look at these different categories, we look at the high school, the new facility, obviously, we're in our 60th year here at the high school, but with our new one-to-one across all grades, with our flexible learning spaces and the breakout areas, with a lot of work that's been done in the curriculum around competency-based progression and things like that, we're looking to cover all of these specific areas. Tonight's program might focus a little bit more on kind of learner profiles, and you get that from Mr. Nosie's presentation, with direct reference to our freshman advisory program, but also, you know, as you'll see from the different presenters, a number of these will, you know, are kind of flowering at the high school at a deeper level. So, the definition that you have up here is kind of color-coded, so I'm not going to read it to you, but certainly the whole slideshow will be on the high school website, so everyone has access to that. But, again, within the specific of the how, it's more of a philosophy than a what does it look like? It might look differently at different schools, and that's part of that philosophy of personalized learning. And this is the definition that we agreed upon as a faculty at the high school. This is really the Maple definition that we've adopted, that really started, again, more at a deeper level last year with our work with the team from relational coordination. So, our first presentation tonight is Ms. Carrigan and Mr. Flanga, Empowering Educators Through UDL. They are our UDL coaches at the high school, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good evening. Hi, I am Mr. Flanga. Along with me presenting tonight.
Shelley Carrigan, hi.
Ms. Carrigan. So, we are the UDL coaches for the high school, and how this started out is, well, I guess taking a step back, UDL, so UDL stands for Universal Design for Learning. It is kind of one of these, I guess, hot topic items, along with personalized learning and a lot of other things in education. And so, universal design for learning is just that. It actually, it has its roots in architectural and building area, field, I suppose, and so it's a way of, it's a guiding set of principles that help make the curriculum accessible to all students. So, with that, you know, if you can take, you picture, you know, a building being built, and think about, you know, maybe a staircase versus a ramp, okay? So, staircase, most people can use a staircase, but there may be somebody who has a disability or is in a wheelchair. There's something that will prevent them from being able to use those stairs. Then you think about maybe a ramp, and everyone being able to use that ramp, so people with and without disabilities. So, in that kind of context, you know, the ramp is more accessible for everyone. So, universal design for learning, kind of similar, is it's a way to make the curriculum accessible to all students. So, Shelley and I started, Ms. Carrigan and I started in 2018, 2019, as UDL coaches for the high school. The district is involved, was involved with this RADAR grant that was provided by the state. So, there are two coaches from each school throughout the district. Shelley and I are the coaches for the high school. It's pretty teacher-driven, teacher-led initiative, I guess, to kind of get more teachers involved with implementing universal design for learning strategies into their classrooms. We started in the 1819 school year with 10 teachers who volunteered to participate from five different departments in the building, focused primarily on the principles of UDL, trying to just introduce the concepts to teachers and then get them to incorporate it in their classes, as they were able to do that, structuring their lessons through a UDL lens, which lots of times will just provide options for students in what their, or how they choose to express their understanding. Shared some ideas, questions, we did some classroom observations with each other. We worked with a UDL coach through SEEM Collaborative. Her name is Emily Pat, very knowledgeable woman who is, we are fortunate to have working with us again this year. Shelley will touch a little bit more on that. But she primarily came into the school year later in the year, I believe it was in May, to do some observations, meet with the teachers who were participating, and be able to give them a little bit of feedback. Last year, several of the teachers created lesson plans for those observations that implemented various UDL strategies. So, I'm going to hand it over now to Ms. Carrigan, and she can kind of talk about where we are right now.
So, this year, Andrew and I were lucky enough to be able to continue with the coaching position. So, we have 27 teachers who have now jumped on board from six departments, so that's pretty awesome, that we almost tripled the number of participants. And this year, we're focusing on, because after we worked with Emily, we felt like teachers were doing a pretty good job with the representation piece, so letting, kind of giving options for how students learn information, and then also the expression piece, how they show what they've learned. So, we're focusing more on the engagement part, like why are we learning it, which is the trickiest part to do. So, that's our focus for this year. We started by recording a lesson of us teaching, just individually, and we watched it and kind of did some self-assessment, which, if you haven't filmed yourself doing your job, it's really awkward, and, but it's a good way to reflect something that I had to do when I was student teaching, but that was a really long time ago. And we kind of use that as our starting point, and we will record again later on, like late winter, early spring, to hopefully see some growth there. Where also, Andrew and I have been reading the book Engage the Brain as our, part of our role as coaches, because all the UDL stuff is really brain-based, and it's based on actual science and data, so we're reading that to kind of help us understand what's going on, so we can help the teachers we're working with. So, like last year, we're sharing ideas in our group, we have a monthly meeting, we're working on developing this resource document, which is still in the, see, it's, you know, it's a living document, so it's being developed, but the idea is that eventually, with kind of resources, et cetera, that eventually we get to the point where we can share this out with the entire faculty in May, so we take what these 27 teachers have been doing to the entire, all 70, however many of us there are. And we're meeting with Emily after school on Wednesday, and then she'll be coming in. We didn't have her, we didn't schedule any time for her to do observations this week while she's in the district, because, as Julia said earlier, it's end-of-quarter testing and review for mid-year exams, but she'll be coming in in March and May to do some observations and feedback. And I have a couple of students here with me, so these are some examples of some of the products that I've gotten from my ninth-grade biology classes. So, I was, and this is something that, as teachers, we do all this UDL stuff kind of behind the scenes, but when Mr. Flanga and I were meeting with Emily last week, she was like, "Tell the students about it, like, it's for them." So, I kind of started to tell, as I was trying desperately to recruit students to come in tonight and talk, I was like, "So, guys, we've been doing this UDL stuff," and so I was telling them a little bit. And then Angelina and Annalise, who are here, I'll have, if you guys can come on up, I was telling them a little bit more, which I'm going to be sharing with the ninth graders after mid-year exams, one thing at a time, but like, really, the goal of UDL is to get the students to become expert learners, so they are kind of in charge of their own learning and really taking ownership for it. So, Angelina Palazzolo and Annalise Butler are in my honors biology class, and they are, they're just going to tell you a little bit about some of the UDL stuff they've been doing in bio and other classes.
Okay, so, so, my examples are just centered around projects and assignments that we've had. So, in biology, all the projects we have, we can do, you know, a poem, or a video, or just anything like that. And it really just helps students, including myself, to express themselves, and makes them feel like they're not, you know, forced to one area in the project, they can really just be comfortable with what they're learning and presenting. Another example is in my health class, let's see, where was that? Oh, well, okay, so in history, for the tests, we can have, we have the study guide, and then we can have, there's multiple choices for short answers that we can choose from, so we can really just prepare, and there's multiple aspects that we're learning, but we can really just focus on one. And another example is also in health, we're also doing a project on mental disorders. So, today we got to choose one that we really want to focus on, like OCD, schizophrenia, things like that. It can just really help the student feel like comfortable. It's also a lot less stress on the student, and I feel like it's, like, having the same options as all the other students can make them feel like the subject doesn't matter as much, or isn't as significant, but as compared to if you have your own unique assignment, you can feel like you really are putting in the work for a reason, and overall, there's just a really better outcome. Also, having multiple options gives you a fair choice to show what you really know, and you can be, overall, just like really proud of your work.
Some examples I've had were, in my US history class, he gave us several different prompts that had to do with modern issues in the world, and we got to research the topic that we got to choose, and write an essay within a group and collaborate on it. And I felt that it really felt personalized, so I could learn about things that I was interested in, and stuff that I felt like affected me. And I feel like getting to choose the way you present your knowledge is really important, because depending on like the way you learn, it's the same kind of thing, where it's the same where you could present your knowledge in different ways. So, some people might not be good at test-taking, so it might be easier for them to make a project, or do something funner to present what they learned in their class. Me and Annalise are in all the same classes, so we have a lot of the same opportunities for different, for different opportunities like that. And I feel like it's a lot, it's a lot more beneficial for the student to get to choose which path they're taking, just generally.
Nice job, guys.
Do you have any questions? We've got...
I have a couple of questions. So, first of all, thank you guys for coming, and thank you for volunteering to come and speak before us tonight. I know that it's not, yeah, I mean, I'm surprised people don't want to come talk to us, but, you know, it's, I know, I know it takes a lot, so thank you for that. So, I have a couple of questions. First one is, when you guys do all these projects, you're obviously working in groups sometimes, but it seems interesting, do a lot of these get presented so everybody can see what's being done, or is this just all turned in and the teachers see them? Like, I don't know how this works. Like, do you guys ever present to the class so that everybody can see the projects that everybody else worked on?
I mean, some of them, it's really the teacher's choice. Like, I know in biology, you get to choose, like, we did a rap, like, a video for our project, and we're going to choose to present that, because we just want to show our hard work, but then, you know, in others, obviously, it's better for just the teacher, teacher's view only. So, it really just depends on the teacher, I guess.
It depends on like what the content is, because if it's like an essay, I don't know if the students really want to, like, read other people's essays.
Yeah, because, I mean, I wouldn't even think to do some of the ideas that people are doing, like a rap, or, I mean, it would just be something I wouldn't even think about, and since, I mean, I think they mentioned earlier, the UDL is really like a newer, like trendier idea. I mean, have you seen a big, I mean, you guys are, you know, in high school now, I mean, have you seen a big change since you were, you know, elementary or middle school? Have you seen that? I mean, a big change where, did it, was it used to, did it used to be mainly like book reports and essays, and now you see this more often? Or is this, you know, has it been this way for years?
I feel like I see the choices more often. There were opportunities to make different types of things in the past, but it was normally like you only get one option, but now I feel like I do have a lot more options in what I'm presenting.
And I also feel like students just, in general, just went to the most common way to present what they know, instead of just branching out. So, in high school, it really gives you that ability, like branch out and express yourself with whatever you want to present, and present on something you're more educated on.
That's great. I would just do an essay, and I'm not creative enough, so I appreciate the talent to do any of these, so, thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Excellent job.
All right, so I think we'll just transition to Mr. Nosie. I will say, though, I saw young stomach, young, I like young stomach stuff, early, the early days was better than the newer stuff, but I'm just kidding. Mr. Nosie, speaking about, so if you recall back on that original slide about the learner profile, and that, as our presentation, and the young lady's, Annalise, I mean, Angelina just spoke about, kind of, how can we maximize that within the model that we have here at the high school, without giving the impression to, namely, students and faculty, like, we're doing something else, and we're, we think it's going to work, but we're not sure. We feel like, you know, with Mr. Nosie, certainly as our freshman advisory coordinator, the framework for this type of thing already exists, and how are we leveraging it in the best way that we can? And that's what Mr. Nosie is going to talk about next, around the personalizing freshman advisory.
Hey, hello, thank you very much. Before I get started on this, I'm one of the teachers in the UDL program, I've done it for the past two years, and it's been, it's one of the best things I've done, and I've been designing and redesigning a lot of my lessons in my English room, in my English classroom, and it's been really great. But as far as freshman advisory is concerned, every freshman, so we just lost our two, but every freshman at the high school is placed in an advisory power block, so during their power block, they go to a specific teacher every day during that time period, and we sort of have four main goals while they're in that, in that advisory block. First one is to help them to transition to high school and then onto their sophomore year, so we focus on the transition to high school earlier on, and then later this spring, we'll get into the transition to sophomore year, talking about choosing classes and things like that. It helps them to establish an adult connection in the building, whether that's their power block advisor, or it helps them sort of realize they have a coach, or they have their, you know, their math teacher, or something like that. One of our big projects in the freshman advisory is developing and tracking their progress on goals, and then also identifying and logging their interests and strengths to help personalize their learning experience. So, the two young ladies here, they're talking about the projects they chose, this is an opportunity for them to realize, "Oh, I'm really good at, you know, making dioramas, I'll do that when I do my project. I'm really good at writing a creative piece of writing, this is what I'm going to work on." And that's one of those, one of the goals, one of the things we focus on in the freshman advisory. So, the first thing I want to talk about is that transition to high school. So, the advisors have their large group meetings, where they have, you know, their 20 or so kids in the power block, and this happens, every few weeks, they sort of make sure everyone's in there, we'll have an announcement, say, "Make sure you're in your power block, don't, you know, go make up a test," or go to like Lunch with the Scientists, whatever else is going on. And then additionally, they have individual meetings, where they'll meet with students sort of one-on-one during probably a couple of power blocks out of the time they have. So, in the fall and spring, it's all about their transition. and logging their interests and strengths to help personalize their learning experience. So the two young ladies here, they're talking about the projects they chose. This is an opportunity for them to realize, oh, I'm really good at, you know, making dioramas. I'll do that when I do my project. I'm really good at writing a creative piece of writing. This is what I'm going to work on. And that's one of those, one of the goals, one of the things we focus on in the freshman advisory. So the first thing I want to talk about is that transition to high school. So the advisors have their large group meetings, where they have, you know, their 20 or so kids in the power block. And this happens, every few weeks, they sort of make sure everyone's in there. We'll have an announcement, say, make sure you're in your power block. Don't, you know, go make up a test, or go to like lunch with the scientists, whatever else is going on. And then additionally, they have individual meetings, where they'll meet with students sort of one-on-one during probably a couple of power blocks out of the time they have. So in the fall and spring, it's all about their transitions, so either to high school or to their sophomore year. Things that we've looked at so far are looking at, excuse me, navigating, being a student at the high school, choosing their classes, that's coming up, our program of studies, obviously, will be out soon, and identifying their strengths, as I mentioned earlier, to prepare for a successful and fulfilling high school career. So realizing what they're good at and what they like, so they can sort of figure out where they want to go with their, their time here, and even beyond. The other goal, or another goal, is helping students to find another adult connection in the building. So we have our meetings where they develop goals, and they identify an adult who can help them reach them. So one of the first things we did is we had a survey sent out to all the freshmen. They filled out, you know, I have goals, I work on goals, here's someone that could help me with it. And we had a really good response rate with that. And then we're currently in the process of putting those goals onto Naviance, one of the programs they have access to. I've been working with Mr. Rosa in the guidance department on that. Another aspect of that adult connection is having an adult in the building who has access to their grades. So I no longer have a freshman power block, but when I did, I was able to jump on there. And all power block teachers can do this, I think. Jump on and say, oh, hey, you know, you're doing really well in science. Or, hey, you're having a hard time in math. Maybe you should go see your math teacher during power block today. And we have those periodic check-ins related to that. There's also an element of consistency, which I think is important. They're in the same place at the same time, and it's every day. It's not, you know, a greener goal situation. It's every single day, and they're with the same adult, which I think is important to foster that connection. They see someone, you know, theoretically 180 times a year. The big thing we started with, as I mentioned, is their goal setting. So we had them develop short and long-term SMART goals for school, extracurricular activities, and their post-high school life. So six total, so a short term and a long term for each of those. And they track those through Naviance. We're going to set that up. They're done on paper right now. We're going to push that on to the computer after midterms. And then they can track and log that process, that progress alongside their advisor in reaching that goal. And something we came up with earlier on in the year with that survey is that 90% of the students in the freshman class said they discussed their goals with an adult in the building, whether that's their power block teacher, or a subject teacher, a coach, an advisor, guidance counselor, somebody. Which I was pretty great, that all those students are working on that. And then the ultimate goal of all this is helping the kids personalize their learning. That's part of that UDL piece that Andrew and Shelley mentioned. And our thought is that by understanding their interests, strengths, and goals, they can chart a course in their high school career that is fulfilling and successful. Are there any questions about the advisory? Rich, go ahead.
Yeah. So it sounds like you're starting, like, right off, right off the bat, talking to the students, which of course is really good. Are you, are you bringing any information from middle school as part of that, or are you basically starting with a kind of clean slate with each student?
The, the middle school piece, that they're providing that, I guess, the students on their own. Like, this is what I, you know, focus on, middle school. That's, that's the main source of information for that. This is really the second year that we've been focused on the Naviance goals piece. So, you know, it's, it's developing, but I think that's something that they bring to the table on their own, knowing their past experiences.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, the first one is, so now that the middle and high school is, are combined, do you feel like the transition's any, any easier, or is it the same as it was before?
I think the, like, the physical transition's easy. They know where the building is. They know, you know, they know where the cafeteria is. They know that sort of stuff that, like the logistical things that might stress a freshman out. But I think as far as switching to our schedule, and different teachers, different expectations, seeing, you know, a senior in the hallway, when you're just where the oldest kid, you know. I think that stuff still exists in the building, just that, you know, understanding what it's like to be in high school, as opposed to being, you know, across the, the bridge.
And I think, I mean, I just, again, I was in high school a long time ago now, but it seems like, I felt like in my, my school, it just seemed like, when, once you got to high school, it was more like, this is real. This counts for college. This counts for things, like, you know, sixth, seventh grade was nice, but, you know, once you get to ninth grade, everything is counting. And so is there a lot more stress? Do you feel like freshman year is really the year that a lot of that begins, that there's more pressure on it?
Yeah, looking at their goals, they definitely have, their goals are much more focused on, I want to do this when I'm older, and now this is my time to make sure I'm doing that. I mean, you guys are upperclassmen, right? You know that this is like your time to, to be, you know, I want to do this when I'm older. I need to buckle down and make sure I'm doing a good job here. And that's, we help them recognize that in that advisory. But I think it's also, we help them try to find a balance. One of the things we're doing outside of the things I mentioned here is, alongside the library, we have a reading challenge. So every power block, every freshman power block, they're tracking how much outside reading they're doing. And whichever power block gets the, the most hours, using an app, I cannot remember the name of the app, whichever power block gets the most hours logged, they get a pizza party from the library. So it's, it's a balance, I think, of, you know, I want to go to this college and study this, but also, here's a way I can, you know, relieve some stress and read a book that's not assigned to me.
And do you see a lot of students supporting each other? Or is it mostly looking for the support of the advisor? Is there a lot of support amongst the collie, the students as well?
I think so. One of the things we're working on right now is having them identify who can support them. So I think in general, they tend to look to an adult, at least as a freshman. And then one of the things we've talked about, so I think there's nine advisors and myself. So when we talk, we have our meetings, we've been talking, okay, how can we help them identify who can help them? And it's, it's not just the person. So, okay, you want to get better at, you know, hitting the opposite field. It doesn't have to be just your baseball coach. It can be, you know, someone on the team that's good at that. So helping them figure out who can help them, whether it's an adult or another kid.
I think that the other nice piece about this is that there's that obvious kind of self-reflection, self-assessment that the student is doing. But then, in documenting that, and then the teacher access, once we get that loaded into Naviance, and now, on the teacher's side, again, to help with this personalization, you say, well, I see you're good at these things. In fact, in this class, there's two other students that are interested in this. This might be a nice opportunity to collaborate. So it really is a, you know, kind of a two-way opportunity for that information. And we're really, we're really hoping that it's, you know, that the upside is really quite dramatic, because I think, again, it's a long process to go through that process, to think about, you know, gee, next time I'm in this situation, I know what I can say. I know what, I don't have to think, like, well, I'll just do this, or, right, I can look at my goals, or this will really help, or, here's a real interest factor that I have. And I know this other student has the same interests. So, you know, we're excited about this model.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to, now, we're going to kind of bring it in for our next presenter, Mr. Ledoux, who's got some of his physics students with him tonight. So again, we, we kind of had a, an overall curriculum approach with our presentation of UDL as, as an idea, under that umbrella of personalized learning, and now how we're kind of building that at the freshman level with our advisory program, and now extending it directly, you know, into the classroom, specifically with physics. Mr. Ledoux.
Thank you, AJ. So what I'll run through this evening, we'll introduce everyone here. I'll talk about some physics education research that's ongoing right now, and what's going on in that. I'll talk about how I'm incorporating physics education research into our classroom with the use of practicals. And I'll finish with an interesting professional development opportunity that I got to experience over the summer. So, again, my name's Tom. This is my sixth year of teaching, and my second year in North Reading. And I have been teaching students physics for six years. So I think that's important, that we remember that we are teaching students subjects, and that we're not just this, you know, wealth of knowledge, and that we're teaching students stuff. And with me this evening, I have...
My name's Brennan Witz.
Ian Miller.
I'm Natalie Gauntier.
Thank you. So the bread and butter of any physics course, if you've taken one, was probably the end-of-chapter textbook problems, and whether they were in a textbook, or whether the teacher copied them out of the textbook and gave them to you, they're the bread and butter. They're the, you know, someone swings from the end of a rope, and how high does the rope go, or how far does the block slide, or, you know, how many different ways can this ball roll down a ramp, and what does it really mean? But in 2002, Kim and Pak did a study that showed correlation between the number of textbook problems solved and conceptual understanding. So they surveyed about 30 students in a class who were going on to college. This was done in Korea, where students typically have to take an entrance exam in order to get into a, study a science in college. And students complete upwards of 3,000 textbook problems before taking a standardized test. And there was no correlation between the number of problems they solved out of the textbook and their conceptual understanding of a topic. So sure, they could solve a problem, but when asked a question that wasn't numbers-based, and wasn't a high-level thinking math problem, but was a physics question, there was no correlation between whether a student could get it right and how many problems they solved. So to continue with that, we've talked about how we can show multiple contexts, and how we can do multiple different things in class that will allow students to better visualize and hopefully gain that conceptual understanding. And the way that we do that in science classes is through laboratory experiences.
One of the things that really helps those students kind of learn and grasp the knowledge is practicums, which are essentially labs, is the better name for them. It's one thing to get a problem, you know, Joe pushes a car. How fast does it go when it's, when it's stopped, whatever. Those aren't, those don't help students like me learn. Those are, you get the answer, you get a check, you go to lunch. That's the end of it. When you can physically see that, it gets you motivated to learn. When you do all the math out, when you make all the calculations, and what you do actually worked, that's something totally different than getting an answer and being told, oh, yeah, that's going to happen. It's a whole new realm. It gets students excited about learning. And when students are excited, guess what they do? They want to learn more. So it's a whole nother realm, if you can get a student excited and motivated, and get that fire in them to learn. So we have two demonstrations here of a practicum that we did to calculate how high to drop a spring with a mass on it to try not to crack the egg. So with this one, that's obviously a failed, failed experiment. That one needs a redo. Something got messed up. But after adjustment, after looking back at your work, making some few tweaks, so obviously, the aim's not 100%, but if it was on target, the egg would have still survived. So it's little labs like this, that, in my opinion, really make physics something exciting, something palatable, and something that students like us really love.
I think another good thing that I find helpful with the labs and the practicums is that it takes these weird, abstract, and complicated concepts and formulas that we learn in class, and it applies it to a real-world thing. And it's a great way of helping us understand these concepts, as opposed to just looking at a textbook, or a formula, or something. It's, it's kind of tough to picture in your head, and being able to kind of lay everything out, and combining everything that we know into something that can, you know, take shape in these labs, whatever they are, is really helpful for that.
So the thing I find most helpful about these labs is that you're familiar with seeing, like, how to set something up. So when it comes time for the AP exam, although you don't want to focus on, like, the big aspect of the AP exam, you want to focus on the learning more, you're more familiar with, like, oh, say this FRQ says, okay, we're giving you, like, all of these materials, and we want you to find these variables. You're familiar with how to, like, set up something in order to get those variables. And then you know from experience that if you do it a certain way, then you can get those variables.
Thank you, guys. Next up, I just have two, two more pictures of two lab practicals. So when we started with Newton's laws and dynamic, and static equilibrium, this is a traditional textbook problem, where you have two hanging masses, one mass here, and one mass here. And based on the angle that it makes here with this pulley, and there's a pulley over here, you can determine the mass of this block. And it's a pretty standard intro-level textbook problem, when we, when you begin Newton's laws for static equilibrium. Instead of giving them that problem, we can set up this experiment where students can diagram out this picture. All they were allowed to use was a ruler. And they were able to measure angles using a ruler, and accurately predict the mass of that hanging number seven block. So, very visual, and at the end of it, they get a result. They have to physically remove the block from this setup, bring it over to a scale, and put it on. And they know if they're right or if they're wrong. So that has, that concludes my lab practical portion of it. I just quickly want to talk about this really interesting professional development opportunity I had over the summer, because I think not many people know about it, and I think it's really worth showing. So I was able to find a physics professional development over the summer. If you don't know, those are hard to find and hard to come by. And it was a way to incorporate modern physics into our high school curriculum. And where I ended up was I ended up in Washington State, and I ended up on the eastern part, the desert side. I did not go to Seattle. And there, there is a lab called the Laser Infratometer Gravitational Wave Observatory, or as I'll refer to it for the rest of the evening, LIGO. And it was designed as a way to detect gravitational waves. What a gravitational wave is, is when two large objects in space are making the end of their journey and collide. They warp the spacetime around them, and they cause ripples in the spacetime around them. Those ripples are sent through the gap, through the universe, and through space. And eventually, they reach Earth. And when they reach Earth, they warp, and bend, and stretch, and compress Earth, not to any noticeable but amount, but it actually happens. And they're testing them out here at LIGO. The really interesting thing I thought when I first started reading about these was that gravitational waves were predicted by Einstein in 1915. Mathematically, they could exist, sure. Einstein said we'd never be able to find them in 1915. And 100 years later, on September 14th, 2015, in Hannaford, Washington, the first gravitational wave was recorded and observed. Two supermassive black holes collided many millions of years ago, and their, their gravitational waves reached Earth and passed through LIGO's detector. And that's where I was. Those arms are four kilometers long, and they can measure up to 10 to the minus 18 meter changes in them. So when they get longer and shorter, those arms can detect it. So this is awesome. How do I bring it into the classroom, right? So what we have to do first is we teach students that gravity is not this thing that makes apples fall on people's heads, and that gravity warps the space around us. So we think of space as a bed sheet, and when we put something on the bed sheet, it bends the spacetime. And how a gravitational wave, when two things coming together to merge, cause great ripples in these, in this spacetime. We can demonstrate that, and we demonstrate how LIGO and this detector are able to find those ripples and detect those ripples. They're my references. I'm happy to share with you, through my membership with the American Association of Physics Teachers, those, if you're interested in reading them. Do you have any questions?
Well, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments first. I mean, we clearly have very different ideas for summer plans. I would say, it, it is very nice and refreshing to see teachers that are so invested in what they do. And so, like, I mean, I think your passion for the, for what you're doing comes out in this, and so I think that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of, I mean, I like, I think there's consistency overall with what we've been hearing for the last couple of years here, when you're talking about how we're trying to, how we're trying to learn things. Like, every time we go to the elementary schools, and they, everything's about doing something hands-on, and it just seems like the learning is better when you do things hands-on. And so, I mean, I guess my only question is, like, I mean, do you I mean, do you, do you see the correlation then? I mean, do you feel like I'm testing? Because the testing's obviously not lab-based usually, correct? I mean, or do you do lab-based testing as well?
Um, so like a physical lab as an exam would be a no. But um in keeping with the nature of the course and how there is an exam at the end of it, one of the three free responses giving, given on the AP exam will be a data or lab-based experiment. So students do know, need to know how to design an experiment, collect data from the experiment, and analyze the data.
Okay, and and do, and are there a lot of studies that show that by, I think that's kind of what you pointed to before, but where, you know, like, when you do the labs, I mean, eventually you do test scores and like the results go up. I mean, is it just for that or is it also, like, I would imagine also the other advantage is you learn it and you remember it beyond just the test? Because like, there's a lot of things that I remembered that I could remember for the test on Friday, but I might not remember beyond that. But is there a correlation with long-term understanding and learning beyond just the test?
I haven't read um anything about that yet. Uh, I just wanted to go back to the middle bullet there with Kim and PAC and how they showed little correlation exists between solving textbook problems. The piece that I left out of this presentation was what goes on during um intro physics, which happens during the junior year, where we follow a modeling instruction um curriculum. Modeling instruction is where, instead of starting out a topic by giving some key vocabulary, key terms, um, you start them off with a question in a lab and they, from the, and they develop a model on their own. It doesn't even necessarily need to be the way that it looks in the textbook. You know, students could determine that speed is seconds per meter and not meters per second, but they're designing the experiment and they're coming up with it on their own. So the, and better part of intro physics in the eleventh grade and for some, it's the twelfth grade when they take it for the first time, is spent designing experiments and coming up with these ideas. Um, instead of teaching them as Newton's laws, we teach them as the model of for forces. We talk about the balanced force model, the unbalanced force model. We talk about the energy model and how a pendulum swings back and forth is a model. And it's mathematically modeled, but before it was mathematically designed, it was done. So we try for more visual representation first and then the math comes second. We'd have to look at numbers to see how many students are taking physics and seeing how that has improved.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you and to the students again, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna kind of get us back to LIGO. All right, um, so that kind of concludes the uh kind of the high school presentation portion. And again, I, just to kind of quickly wrap that up, that idea of um looking at it more personalized experience, starting with uh the teachers, starting with the faculty, getting them on board. We can see the growth in that UDL model. Looking at the freshmen, saying, how can we start to build these profiles? Get kids confident in goal-setting, confident in their interests, and then start to support that through their freshman, sophomore, junior year, and then getting into, obviously, AP Physics C. And, you know, kind of using that as saying, hey, now we've got uh a real opportunity to be an independent thinker, uh, be really confident with the content and start to um really assess and analyze some really deep, uh, deep, deep material. So I hope uh you enjoyed those three presentations. If you're okay, we can transition now if you would, if you're okay with, to the four new courses that um I'm hoping can make it into the course of study for uh the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Um, the, I'm assuming you have the packet that included those courses in the course write-ups. I will introduce, uh, sorry, I will just briefly uh comment that when we look at new courses, there's a, there's a number of um kind of quote-unquote boxes that we want to make sure are checked when we do this. One is that the course material is relevant, uh, that it is interesting and has um, you know, a basis for student interest. It is accessible to students. And how do we maintain that accessibility for multiple levels, uh, you know, regardless of the content? That it is interconnected with other course materials. Not a course that just kind of floats out, um, you know, outside of the program of studies, but relates to the existing coursework and along a pathway of of study. And also that it's rigorous and that it's gonna challenge students. And additionally, it's always nice when our courses align specifically with the school committee's goals too. So I think you'll see some of that as well. So these four courses, um, and I just kind of gave you the titles and the specifics around, around them. And I'm happy to respond to questions. Again, um, this, this is information that is in your packet. And hopeful, I'm hopeful that these courses would make it into the two thousand twenty-one program of study.
Rich?
So I had a question, AJ. What's the demand, what's the demand side of this? So what, where, where is the sort of request coming from or the desire coming from?
Sure, sure. So I will say, there's a, there's a couple of, a couple of answers to that. We can start at the top. Um, one of the things that that we have heard from students in the past is I would take more courses, I would take this course if I had a little flexibility. Do we have semester-long courses? We really don't. We have year-long courses. So Epics and Fairy Tales is um a literature course that would serve as that kind of semester model. Uh, and as you, as you see in the uh course description, half of that, so the course would be split. We really look for um a large number of uh course requests for this, somewhere in the, I'd say forty to fifty range, so that half of the students are in the Epics side, half on the Fairy Tales side, and they'll swap at the um, at the semester break. We are looking at doing a similar model right now with our uh creative writing and our novel writing classes. Kind of trim the creative writing model down, trim the ma- uh the novel writing down and see. I will say, novel writing has it running. We've always had a lot, some interest in it, never the numbers great enough to kind of really run it as a, as a single class. And we're hoping that this, this approach kind of gets that. With respect to the advanced algebra with financial applications, I think that's a, that's another course that we're looking for, for seniors to say, all right, I'm in, um, I'm in pre-calculus.
Right.
Do I really want to go to Cal-Goners?
Right.
Do I really want to be in stats? Is there another option? Is there, is there a business option that's not statistics? Um, one of the, you know, one of the really, um, I'll say sausage-making uh pieces of this is meeting with uh the curriculum leaders, meeting with the guidance department, following up with students, looking at um college data and saying, what courses are really, uh, courses out there that, that um have an end in mind that we, maybe we don't have uh accounted for. So that's, that, that advanced algebra, I think, is a really, we, Mr. Rosa and I did a number of um, did some data and there are, there's greater than eighty students right now in uh pre-calc academic, juniors in pre-calc academic. So I'm in that class and I'm saying, where, where, what are my choices?
Where do I go next?
Do I really, is it Cal-Goners? Oof, I don't know if I'm ready for that. All right, so I guess I'm gonna take statistics. Well, it really doesn't match up with my major. So um, I think that's a course that really uh we feel is gonna kind of be in that business, my kind of business sweet spot um that uh, you know, is advanced algebra, not solely statistics, but, but may do a little, uh, a little of everything there. The A-
I mean, I, I would just add to that. I mean, you're talking, it, it says in there a college preparatory, but I just think overall life preparatory as well is important because, I mean, just basic, you know, understanding, investing, credit, you know, employment and income taxes, like, I mean, I deal with a lot of young people at my work and a lot of them don't have very basic knowledge about, you know, financial wherewithal, how to budget, things like that. And I understand that's not always what an advanced algebra class, class is going to be, but the more, more that it can apply to real life is worthwhile as well. And I mean, I know they do the, you know, they do a lot of like things here and there. They do that, uh, that one, what's it called, where they come in and they have community members affair that comes in or whatever. But again, from that, you see all the time that a lot of people don't get really basic, like, you know, a lot of people think if I pay off my mortgage, it's bad because I get, don't get a tax deduction. It's like, well, but you're paying interest on that and just understanding it, I think that's useful. So I like that and I like the uh, yeah.
And it feels like the, it goes in the other direction too. The, the real-world applications bring the algebra, uh, you know, to more meaning, more, uh, brings it to life a little bit too, so.
That's the hope, absolutely.
Works both ways.
That's what we anticipate. Uh, on the other side, the AP Computer Principles, Computer uh Science Principles. This is a new, a fairly new uh curriculum that the AP, the College Board is, is rolling out. The access point is, I would say, uh, lower than the AP Computer Science. Um, it's more about uh program, um, program writing and analytics than, let's say, the uh, the Computer Science, uh, Computer Science A. So I've worked closely with uh Dr. Downs on this one and kind of, uh, you know, I will, I will tell you that one thing we are very mindful of at the high school is this idea of how AP courses shape student course requests. So we are, uh, at the leadership team level, we are preparing a study uh for the early winter, uh, mid-winter, early spring, uh, to collect some data on this and, and kind of get a sense of where are we with our AP model on our, um, but we don't want to miss an opportunity to have a uh, a computer science, expand that computer science uh program right now when we can. And Ms. uh, Ms. San Arno and Ms. Yamas are in the back here and that um, they're gonna be presenting uh in a bit on another topic. But again, this contemporary Hispanic culture course, uh, an elective that kind of supports that, that world languages instruction, but doesn't maybe compel a student to feel like they have to go into an area where they're not very comfortable, but they want to maybe broaden their um, their experience with a language across culture, a cultural understanding. So I think that'll be a uh, a course that we'll see a lot of interest in as well.
Hi.
I just have one more comment or question.
So the, and maybe this is what you're talking about in terms of your, the work you're gonna do later, looking at the AP program, but do you see a conflict between what we've talked about in the early part of your presentation with the, with the, with the personalized learning and the AP program, which is very, has a very specific target uh at, at, at the end?
No, I, I don't, I don't see a conflict. I think, um, I will say, you know, having, having been in this, this role for a number of years now and watching students select courses and, I mean, there's, there is certainly, there's the, there's, there's the learning that comes in as a freshman that says, okay, boy, this is a great opportunity. I'm really not sure what I want to do. And there are those students that come through and say, I know exactly what I want. I, I, I have a very clear sense of what I want to be doing. And I wanna, I wanna really challenge myself and I want to uh, you know, maximize the, the rigor that I, that I can. So I think to, to kind of respond to your point, I think the, the, that personalized um focus is, is not inhibited in any way by adding APs, but it's supported because again, that student is, is um, with our open enrollment approach, I can take it or I can, I can, I cannot take it. And I can try it and say, hey, uh, I didn't have to test into this class. I just want to see what that looks like. And that experience, you know, the kind of all boats rise at high tide type of thing. I think it's a, I think it really buffets that, that personalized model.
Okay. So I think we need a motion and a vote on this one. I'm assuming we can do all four together, correct? I think so. Have a motion to accept the new course proposals?
I will make the motion that we accept the new courses uh in, as proposed in the handout. I was gonna read them, but I guess I don't need to. The, the four in the handout.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous? Thank you, Mr. LaBra.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Thank you.
Moving along. Uh, High School Language Immersion International Travel. Did we come down too soon? We came down too soon to go back up.
I'm gonna make you guys sit in the front.
Ah, we'll go.
Hi. Hello, my name is Amy San Arno and I'm the Curriculum Coordinator for World Languages and I'm here with Anna Yamas, who's one of our Spanish teachers and she'll be leading the trip. We're just gonna start off our presentation quickly. I'm gonna talk about the, um, the ties this has to our curriculum and then Anna will get into specifics about the trip that we're proposing. And the handout that I passed out is just a summary of the National World Language Standards and that's just what I'm gonna be referencing in my very brief um presentation on the connection between the, the trip and our standards. So here at North Reading High School, um, our world language program believes strongly in structuring activities that allow our future and current students to demonstrate real-world applications of their cultural and language skills. And that's a theme that you've been hearing a lot tonight and we're gonna jump on that bandwagon as well, that long past are the days that our kids are conjugating verbs and reading about things in the textbooks. Um, through the one-to-one initiative, through just YouTube and other resources we have, we're able to give our kids more authentic opportunities to experience the language in the classroom. But we want to, to skip to the last paragraph, we feel our program is incomplete just doing those sorts of things in the classroom. We want to make sure our kids get out into the community, whether it's here in North Reading or it's in, um, you know, the greater Boston area, but also experience um diverse cultures through an immersion program. Um, and that's what we're hoping to take out of this trip. And we feel as if our um curriculum depends greatly on having this kind of opportunity available to our students. We do have this kind of opportunity available to our French students. Um, a group of students goes to Quebec um every handful of years. So students at North Reading High School before they graduate do have access to that trip. But we currently don't have anything for our students enrolled in Spanish language classes. So I took here a few um different, um, a few different strands and a few different um standards that a trip would um connect to other curriculums as well. Um, you know, you can take a quick glance and, you know, I think stating the obvious, this trip wouldn't just enhance language learning, um, but would enhance a student's general um, general experience here at North Reading High School. And then I took a few, um, a few quotes from our own core value and belief system, our twenty-first century learning expectations, as well as um from our rubric on civic and social um expectations that, you know, these values that we're trying to give our students. Um, and we can really do it properly by putting them on an airplane and bringing them to a Spanish-speaking country and immersing them in um a culture is something that, you know, we've, we've been saying here in North Reading for a long time. It's very important to us. Um, so um, the details about Costa Rica and then, like I said, um, just to kind of follow along here, um, this side here, I think, is a little bit easier to look at at a glance, that our curriculum is um really focused on what we call the five Cs. And the communication piece is very obvious when our, these students go to Costa Rica. Um, you know, this trip is for students taking Spanish classes only. Um, it will be in, conducted entirely in Spanish in the target language. So that hits the communications pe- piece, the cultural piece, um, as Anna will show. Um, this trip is a little different than other trips that the high school usually runs, as in the kids will not just be sightseeing the whole time. They're really gonna have the opportunity to attend classes, to um, to eat lunch, you know, and have informal interactions with locals, but then also have more formal interactions um with scientists and um other, um, other professionals um that correlate with the activities that we'll do. Um, so that cultural piece is really hit. Uh, making connections, I think, uh, it jumps out very obviously as well. The comparisons piece as well. Um, and then, um, lastly, the communities piece, that world language, it's important to us that we show our students that um world languages are used right here in North Reading. They're used in Massachusetts, but um, of course, there's lots of diverse communities out there and we want to expose our students to as many as we can, so.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Uh, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the uh, the tour details for Costa Rica. We're really excited about this trip and we believe that it's truly gonna bring an experience to our students uh taking Spanish classes and the students- the students that really want to take their learning like a step beyond, uh, just a classroom. And of course, we do a lot of activities in the classroom. We do like field trips, but we believe this is an experience that the students will definitely benefit from. Uh, and that, as Amy explained, that ties with the curriculum, with ties with the program and with the five Cs. Um, so we are looking for, of course, a language immersion. All tours activities will be in Spanish. And is, yes, it definitely has the sightseeing piece, everything that gets the students very excited, but also it has the leadership seminars. It has workshops with scientists. And this doesn't mean like they're going to be just in a classroom, just instead of being here in a classroom in Costa Rica. This is actually being at the places where they're going to be learning. Uh, I'm going to explain a little bit. These are some, uh, of the activities, some sample activities as well. Um, so for example, if they're learning about, um, let me see what I s- so I have it over here. So if they're going to learning about the five in thirty thou, um, uh, zones, so they're going to be snorkeling. They're going to be learning about it. They're going to be comparing. They're going to be talking to researchers about it. It's not just being there and, and just listening about it. So they're going to be actually experiencing that. Another is one, just to visit, uh, volcanoes in Costa Rica. It's a big place about volcanoes. They're going to be there learning, talking to a volcanologist and learning and comparing. And everything is going to be in Spanish. So we believe this is going to be a great experience for the students. They're going to learn about renewable energy sources. We're going to be at an oyster farm. They're going to be learning about it. Uh, another topics are recycling. So they're, they're going to be like talking about it. We're going to be visiting places that they're going to kind of, uh, also talk about it. Uh, they're going to be spending time also with students in Costa Rica. So they can kind of also share and talk about, uh, the, uh, all the stuff. Um, that's just an example of some of the things the students will be doing. And I'm so excited about it. And of course, they're going to be snorkeling. They're going to be like canopin tour. They're going to be horseback riding, everything that gets also the students very excited, but at the same time, they're going to be learning. They're going to be talking. They're going to be exposing themselves in the language. So there's a video over there. I'm not going to show it. Takes a little bit, but even experiences from students, from previous students in, even in another schools, they say when they go there, uh, their English and Spanish, they were right here and just day by day, like it was less Spanish, more English. And even though it is like a eight day trip, we believe this is going to be an experience that can change the student's life or the way they see things, the way, uh, they see the language and the communities. Um, this is just a little bit, uh, about comparing, not, not comparing, but like how, uh, the students, uh, we can support another trip because this is a different trip. We have the students, uh, the trips that the students, if they want to tour, they can tour, but this is a language immersion tour. And we believe we have, uh, students that are going to be very interested in, um, coming to this trip. Uh, this is just very general, um, educational goal for our trips. Again, as I said, we're going to be talking about geographies, histories, influence, uh, on Costa Rican culture. Also the importance of preserving endangered species, uh, and diverse topographic. These are just kind of very general topics we're going to be, uh, talking about. And this is, uh, we're working with this company, ACIS. They have like years and years of experience and they have brought like other schools as well to international, uh, trips. And this is just what, like very general stuff that they, um, keep in mind. Um, yeah, it's kind of the same. So AC is tour manager. So that's all the things that we get included, daily breakfast, dinners, excursion tours, basic protection plan, three and four, uh, star hotels, uh, round trip flights. So that's everything. Like it is also, uh, very similar to the EF trips that have been very successful here at our school. I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so I, I, you know, I'm, I'm thinking you're seeing what we're, what we're seeing here in that sense of our historical large groups, uh, to, to another country or, you know, Europe, a number of countries where, uh, and having recently gone on last year, um, to Budapest and Slovenia, et cetera, and kind of, again, being in that, the cultural immersion piece, learning about new, uh, new places, new people being challenged and asked to try this, do this, you know, think about this piece of this culture and how, how they get to this. I will, I will tell you, I mean, you're, you're driving through Croatia and there are bullet holes all along the side of certain houses. Um, that's pretty real. It's pretty, it's pretty striking. Uh, not that long ago. Um, but looking at, well, what's, what's the alternative piece to this experience? We, we don't have a language immersion opportunity. We don't have a, a trip for 12 students that have gone at least through Spanish three and are ready to, uh, take, take a hyper-focused experience in another country, full-time, uh, immersion with language and, uh, you know, that it's, it's, it's a unique and different. Uh, and I think it's, it's missing. Um, and I'm hoping we could kind of fill it, fill that gap.
I mean, if the French can do it, we can let the Spanish do it, too. But, so I think, I think, I'll begin the questions because I believe we probably all have the exact same questions to begin, the specifics of it. I mean, I think I caught that it was an eight-day trip in February of 2021, but when exactly is it? What's the proposed cost of this? Um, do you think, are we going to have to narrow down to get to 12 students? I mean, do you think there's an interest beyond that?
Um, I mean, you want to talk or I can?
That's a logistical question. I think that's.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're hoping for at least like 12 students. So we can bring like two chaperones, but it's definitely open if more students are interested. So that will be kind of the minimal to be like a private, private tour.
Yeah. I think part, I think part of it is like, is to kind of go maybe 12 to 15 and really, really say like, uh, to the students, you are looking for, you've demonstrated a high level of proficiency with the language at this point and you're really looking for this immersive, immersion experience. Uh, so I see it quite different than, um, the other trip. I know the other trip, uh, does kind of fill fast. I see this in the same way, but really trying to keeping it small, um, initially, uh, to, 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 you know, to make sure it's successful. Number one, we want it to run. Um, but to really have it at the other, the other side of the travel experience for students.
And what, what's the cost and the exact dates of this?
Uh, well, uh, do we have the dates exactly? It's going to be February vacation. Yes. I don't know exactly the dates in my mind.
We run it the same way we run the, the other trip, the EF trip, the ACIS trip.
It's April vacation.
We'll probably start on that Friday of break, uh, February, the Friday before break and then run through and then come back the next weekend.
Yeah. We're just, uh, deciding the last activities. So the price is going to be between 3,000 and, and 3,500. So we are, it's pretty much about the same as the EF trips at the school offer every year. So it's going to be somewhere around that. We're just defining the last activities that the students will do.
And is there any experience with the company? I mean, is that, is that company one that we've worked with on other ones? Like?
Yes. It's a company that we use for Quebec. Yes. And I'm, I'm pretty confident that the students are ready for this, even though everything is going to be in the target language. Uh, right now, I'm currently teaching Spanish three academic and honor, uh, classes, but I'm also teaching the Spanish five students. And it's amazing what the students can say and speak. Like lately, we do a lot of, um, let's say presentational, we do like interpersonal communication and it's amazing what they can talk about, the topics we are, we're talking about, like the civil war in Argentina in 1978. We've been talking and they're not even reading. They're not even memorizing. They're just like talking and they're asking questions. It is amazing the way these students can communicate. So I'm confi, confident a trip like this, it'll be like, it will definitely help the students and benefit them even more for their future careers.
Will this have any, um, accreditation towards the biliteracy thing? No?
No, not formally. No, other than the experiential piece. No.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I'm, the students next year, um, well, they've been doing, this year they did, uh, the test in October. They did the seal of biliteracy. And I'm so proud to say that all the students in Spanish five, they took the test, they all got the seal with distinction. Yeah. With distinction or the seal. We have both, right? But I'm so happy to say that everybody got it. So that's amazing. Yeah. That shows the level of Spanish that the students have now because they have been studying that for, I mean, four years at the high school plus, uh, the middle school. And it's amazing what they can do with the language now.
I was just going to ask, is there a specific reason why Costa Rica was chosen over other Spanish speaking countries?
Uh, well, Costa Rica is very tied to the curriculum, especially in Spanish two. Everybody, all the students learn about Costa Rica. And lately it's been so popular about, uh, all the nature that has to offer, talking about renewable, to talking about, um, I got all the, um, yeah, uh, renewable energy sources. I feel like it has a lot to offer. Uh, it is a very beautiful country. It is a very, I would say like peaceful and the beach and the weather. We just feel like it's going to be, uh, a great opportunity. And these two start, I mean, of course, there's so many other countries that we are excited about. Um, yeah. Anything else you want to add? You teach Costa Rica this year?
So, uh, I, excuse me, I had a quick question. Um, like AJ was saying, we, there's lots of great trips and wonderful trips that, that are offered at the high school. Um, and this one seems to be unique from them in that it's, it's a real push for, uh, for that, uh, that component where it's immersion. And it makes me wonder if there might be some students that either overestimate their own abilities or comfort in an immersive environment, but really are interested in Costa Rica and are applying for it. And if you guys have thought about a mechanism for, how do you decide if students are ready or aren't ready for this particular type of trip?
Oh, well, this, uh, trip offers like also we have to do some activities, some research beforehand. So by the, so when we go, they're prepared for that. So we're going to be starting and researching some of these topics. So they're going to be kind of learning ahead of time. So they will know, they will have maybe their questions. They will have something to, to, to share, something to compare when they get together with other students, with the, uh, with other, uh, young students in, uh, in Costa Rica. So I don't know if that answered your question, but the students will be prepared before that. So it's something different also than the, than the tour, uh, touristic trips that they, yeah, they can maybe even check what, okay, what places I'm going to be looking at, uh, monuments and everything, but also this one, they're going to be studying a little bit more about Costa Rica, studying about these topics. And this is very tied with, um, with science classes. So that's what we love about this trip is not just Spanish. This is like so broad that they're going to be learning some other stuff that they can apply in other areas. Yeah.
Rich?
I kind of want to ask that question a little differently. Um, is there a subset of the universe of students who might sort of qualify the trip who, is there a group that, that might on paper qualify, but you would not feel comfortable letting go? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm trying to say, say if there's a, is it everyone who's at a certain level that they'd be qualified to go? Or, uh, are you making sort of more, uh, some judgments about that as well?
So, um, so I think, you know, I, everything we offer in our department is very inclusive and we provide whatever support is needed or remediation is needed to make these sorts of things accessible to all students. And that's true for the trip of Quebec. There's no rules for Quebec that you have to have an A or you have to pass a test to go. Um, and we currently, while we don't take students abroad, we do take students every year to a restaurant where they have to order in the target language, chit chat with friends, you know, ask for a refill of water, say, hey, I'm missing up work, all of the above in Spanish. And the same thing with that is, you know, we support them and we make it accessible to them. And so the same will be true in this trip. Um, certainly the North Reading teachers that go will be bilingual, Spanish and English, um, for support that's needed. Um, ACIS has, you know, offers bilingual, um, tour guides as well. Um, and so while we don't want to give our students too much support and too much of a cushion in English, because once you're in that survival situation, that's when your mind really opens. And that's part of the purpose of this trip is really just getting the kids in there. And it's like, if you want to eat, remember how to say, you don't remember how to say it. And that's when it really sticks. Um, so we definitely want that, um, survival aspect, um, you know, to open up the mind to learning, but at the same time, there'll be all the support a student could need. And absolutely any student, um, who signs up for this trip will have fun, will learn something and will have a memorable experience.
So you're saying everyone's going to eat?
Yeah. I promise.
I just have one more question and, or, or a comment. And I, I think I bring this up on every trip, but, um, I hope it's, I, I hope there are opportunities for students who, who can't afford the, the, the fare or the full fare that, uh, that, that we provide some support for that. And more importantly, I hope that it's, that we make that aware, make, make that known to the students as we're presenting the trip so that someone just doesn't shut down because, and say, I know I can't afford that. Um, uh, that we're, that we're making clear what we are able to do to, to help students who, who have trouble affording, um, as we're presenting the trip so that, so that no one gets discouraged right off the bat. At the end of the day, people are going to have to do what they can do, but.
I think that's one of the reasons that we wanted to get this in early. So we could start doing some fundraising and, and, you know, doing what we could to, to make it as accessible to as many kids that, you know, really want that. Again, I really seen, and we, we had this conversation where we spoke with the, a, a CIS representative over the summer. I want this to be, uh, the student that's interested in this is dramatically different than the students. I, you know, I want to really go to Norway. I haven't done that. I want to see what that, that land is like. Oh, the first thing is I want a completely immersive experience in, in the language I've been studying. That's who really should drive, uh, registration. Um, and it should be anywhere, but that, it's the experience that I want. Really testing myself with the language that I'm learning in a culture that I'm trying to become more, uh, familiar with. So again, I think that's, that's another reason around that fundraising piece.
And, um, just as a quick comparison, um, the schools that I network with and I work with in the area, um, pretty much all offer, um, exchange programs as well as, um, tours in every language that they, um, teach. And so for, uh, world language department or a school to offer several options and several different types of options, um, is certainly not out of the norm, um, you know, in neighboring, neighboring towns and, um, surrounding communities.
Okay. There's no other discussion. Can I have a motion to approve the trip?
I move to, uh, approve the Costa Rican trip for February of 2021.
Second?
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys.
Chris, where's the Latin trip going?
Just, uh, you really only get one choice with that one. Just one moment as we say, I just want to thank Mr. LaPret for a great presentation. I thought all of our teachers and students did a wonderful job tonight.
You did.
Really well spoken. I thought, uh, hearing from the students expressing about student engagement and, and what personalized learning looks like was, was excellent. Um, thank you to Ms. Yamas Castro. I just want to take a moment also to thank, um, Amy San Arno. She's not only our high school teacher here, she's also our six to 12 world language leader. And, you know, she is to me is sort of the exemplar of what I look for in a curriculum leader in the district. She works to advocate for our middle school program, expanding, uh, sixth grade, uh, this year, seventh grade next year, um, coursework to try to get more students engaged. She's, you know, we spent a lot of time together as assistant superintendent, now superintendent, trying to push forward. She, um, brought our seal of biliteracy program here through a study group last year, was very active in getting that going, but is also active at the state level, trying to get these things pushed through. She's working with, um, the state on the new framework. She's sort of an ambassador, I think might be the official title, um, trying to get those new frameworks up and running. So I just wanted to sort of publicly recognize her for all her great work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The only suggestion is when you're talking about the trip you went on for the school, don't mention bullet holes. Okay. So moving on. Now we, two more things. So no continued business. The bus transportation contract. Superintendent, our assistant superintendent Connolly.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, so this evening, I'm, I would like to take a look at our bus transportation, uh, contract. I mean, you have a recommendation, um, this evening as well for your consideration. So you may recall, last year I was up, I presented, um, some data about the, the transportation market and, and what was happening and some, some, there was some detailed information. Um, so North Reading Transportation Incorporated is our current, uh, provider. Um, we have an option to renew for the fifth and final year of that existing agreement, which would extend their contract through, uh, the fiscal year 2021. So all of next school year through June 30, 2021. Um, as I just mentioned a lot, we did kind of an extensive market analysis last December. As I sit here this evening, about a year later, uh, there really hasn't been any significant change in the market conditions, um, a year later that I think would warrant, um, you know, a, a change of what was recommended a year ago. Um, the bus transportation market in Massachusetts continues to experience an increase. Again, there's a variety of factors at play that are, that are resulting in, in why many districts that have gone out to bid over the last three to five years, uh, timeframe, have seen a significant, uh, hike in their, their transportation rates. Um, I did include a comparison of daily bus rates and update to that of surrounding communities for both the current fiscal year, 2020 and, and next year, 2021. Um, I think as the data shows and as the comparison of some of the, the area communities that have recently gone out to bid, that the current market conditions is, would be, I feel if we were to go out to bid and not renew, we would see a higher, higher daily rate. Um, you know, the, the, the average price of the current market is really in the $375 per a. You know, the average price of the current market is really in the $375 per day, per bus. And we would experience about $355 next year with our current rate. So I've spoken to a lot of area business managers, I've spoken to some local, other bus companies. And I think we, by structuring the bid four years ago and giving an option to go out to five years, I think to be able to analyze the market conditions these last, these optional years proved that it was beneficial to have the option to go that five-year term. So this evening, I'm sort of prepared to make the recommendation that we renew the agreement for the fifth and final year for North Reading Transportation. Also, that being said, I think things have gone very smoothly this year with North Reading Transportation. You know, I know we had some issues in the past where we certainly worked through them with some of the bus drivers. I think this year, they've done a pretty consistent, you know, job. And they've certainly have, certainly improved over these last couple of school years. So I think it's the prudent decision that you recommend us to extend the option for their fifth and final year. And at this point, I'll open it up to any questions.
Yeah, I have a question, Michael. So looking over the fiscal year 20, right, ours seem to be right around the median, right around the midpoint for a lot of them. But you can see that going to next year, a lot of them take a hike up that's much more substantial than what we'll be.
That's right.
We'll be going into. I'm wondering if there's an expectation that with this being the last option year, if we'll see, if we expect to see a sizable jump in going to 22?
I think that right now, I would say yes. You know, I think we're at, you know, 355. I think that is, you know, about the median, maybe slightly below the average. And if we, you know, I hope things change, you know, a year from now when we're probably putting out that bid. But most likely, you know, I've seen, you know, area communities go out to bid and suddenly it's in the 400 range or above 400. So that's where the market is trending. I believe, you know, five years ago, we're at 280, 280. So within that five-year window, you know, we experienced it five years ago when we went back out to bid. And if we went from 280 to 330 in that first year. And that was a pretty sizable increase that we dealt with. And then, so I think we'll see an increase more to the, again, 375 to 380. That's what it tends to be happening right now. You know, maybe things will change in the market or in the economy that would alter that. But the other thing that's a challenge is just getting competitive bids. You know, part of the survey I included or asked for, and these are the, these are the area districts that responded. You know, how many bids did folks receive? And, you know, folks are only receiving one or two bids. And that's always a challenge throughout the state. We analyzed three or four years ago, actually maybe even less than that, a year or two ago, you know, options to kind of regionalize and look to go out to bid with area communities to see if that would increase competitiveness. There was an attempt by some Metro West communities, Western communities to do that. It was not successful. It didn't really yield the results they were hoping for. So it's a challenge that everyone's facing. And, you know, hopefully we'll make that as a competitive process. And we'll get, we'll see where we're at a year's time. But, you know, I think at this point in stage, I think that the best prudent and fiscally sound decision is to renew that fifth year and continue to see what we can do as we look to next, you know, the future.
Are the TBDs, are they in the search process right now?
They are, yeah. So those are the districts that have no choice but to go out to bid. Their final year is this year, so they had not gone out to bid to date. So they'll be issuing a bid at some point this year for FY '21.
Janine?
Michael, five years ago, when we went out to bid and it went from 280 to 3...
330, about $50.
We increased the bus fees to come to make a part of that.
We did, yeah. So we helped, we tried to offset that.
Not that you have a silver ball or whatever, crystal ball. Do you foresee maybe the need to do that, or can it be absorbed?
You know, any increase of a fixed cost to that level is always, as we know, is always difficult for the operational budget to absorb. What we've tried to do and is we've tried to make the optional busing program for those families that don't qualify for free busing. But we still, you know, opt to, you know, to opt for transportation and for busing is to make that, you know, the amount that you're collecting from the fee being charged and make that kind of self-support of that optional program. So right now, if we weren't to, if we were to only bus the number of students that we are required by law to bus K through six, you know, greater than two miles, we would be required to have five buses. So we, as you know, we operate 10 buses a year. So the amount that we collect from the fee and the amount that's in the operational budget is not quite a 50-50 split, it's not quite five buses. So we're subsidizing the amount of that optional program in our operational budget slightly. And I think we would, to me, you always kind of wanna watch that formula and not to have potentially the operational budget subsidized. You know, it's so much of a, a much that it would take away from the other needs of the operational budget. And that's kind of the decisions we get into every year when we analyze the instructional piece, which is always the first and foremost of what we're trying to do. And when you get into the kind of the operationally and the fixed costs. So I think it'll be a decision we'll have to face at the time. And I hope that it's not as substantial that we'll look at a fee increase. Because obviously, we never, we kind of wanna hopefully go the other way over time and not, and not face that, but...
Just to clarify, you're talking about on a new contract?
On a new contract.
The $5 increase per day is not gonna result in...
No.
I just wanna clarify for everyone who might be listening.
Yep.
Right, well, because it went from 280 to 3...
330, so that increase is...
From 355 up into the 400, so that's a significant increase as well.
Right. That didn't feel so significant at the time in that budget year that we had to, we felt like we had to do something.
And we also have a reserve or an operating account that we've been eating into the last couple of years, correct?
Correct.
I mean, what is that, what is that looking like right now, the reserve fund for buses?
So we've fortunately been able to keep a pretty healthy reserve in the bus transportation revolving account to, we essentially have about $100,000 of a reserve. And, you know, each year, if we were only to have a budgetary offset that would take in the revenue that we're collecting, that offset would be about $275,000. That's the amount of the revenue that we take in annually. That offset's much higher, because every year we anticipate using a piece of that reserve, about half of that reserve. That offset's actually about $345,000. And then fortunately, every year when we get to the end, we don't necessarily have to use all the money in that revolving account, because things have happened over the course of the year. And there's some money available in the operating budget to limit that amount of that reserve and not take everything. So we've been in that situation over the last five years. It's hard to say what will happen on a year-to-year basis. But I think it's, I think it's good fiscal, you know, budgeting to not, to keep, to maintain a reserve. I always say you want about 15% to 20% in an account like the, like this, in each revolving account. But we're in a good, healthy amount with our revolving accounts. You know, should we experience an increase and not wanna do a significant use of fee increase or use of fee increase at all and not impact an operational budget in any one year? If that's what you're asking, I think we're...
Yeah, I'm just wondering. I mean, I don't know if other, I mean, there was a parent that reached out about fees to me this week. I don't know if other people got the email. But, you know, again, one bus fee is one thing. And I think, I think it's important what you just said, where like, it's, you know, there are certain things that are required by the state and there are others that are, that are not. And I think we try to offer as many services, as many extracurriculars as we can while not, you know, while not impacting the overall curriculum in the district. And so I think we do a good job with that. I think, I think we're all, I think everybody here has the same feeling. I don't think, I think it's a no-brainer about next year. I think we're all just worried about what the next contract is gonna look like. You know, when we're gonna start that and if there's any creative options. Like, I mean, I know that last year, I think there was something floating around where some communities are not owning the buses but trying to staff the buses. And I don't know if there's, if there's any appetite for those sorts of discussions for the next contract where... I don't know. I don't know when we're gonna begin any of this. I mean, when would you start negotiating the next contract?
I typically, I'm always someone that likes to kind of send out a bid early. And so I've typically sent out a transportation contract around this time of year, December, January, for the succeeding, preceding year. So we can kind of get those bids in, analyze it. If we don't like what we're seeing, then you still have time to kind of reject those bids, go back out, which we've done in the past. If you wait too long and you're sending out a bid in late spring, March, or April, which some districts do, those are coming back in, I think, too late to respond to any surprise, budgetary surprise. And then if the numbers come in, in, you know, January, early February, they can be part of the budget development conversation at that time. And you have a better opportunity to react to any surprises or any increases. And to then, and then make some, maybe some creative decision, decisions, you know, do you want something different, or, you know, how can you reduce the cost? So that's typically what would be happening. It would kind of be an advertisement bid, bid season of December, January, and then analyzing those bids and executing a contract, you know, early March for the following year.
Michael, just sorry, one last thing that just popped into my mind. If, are we, are we ever in a better situation when they know you don't have to sign a new contract because you're at the end of your life cycle with a contract? Like, if we were to go to bid this time around, knowing that we're, we can exercise that fifth year?
Yeah.
You know, when people come and bid and they know you have to choose a new contract?
Right.
Are their prices not as competitive because you're in a different position?
I don't think it has a huge significant impact from my experience had been when I've gone out to bid. At times, we've, not, for different types of services, and, you know, we've done that just to kind of, you know, it doesn't, just to kind of test the market and see, you know, we can always reject it and then just extend. What typically happens, especially in this, in transportation and food service and cleaning and different things, is that you sort of frustrate the folks involved in, you know, there'll be ten, sometimes it tends to backfire or go higher the next time, especially when they know competition is limited. So, you know, I think the market tends to drive it and what's going on with gasoline prices and the different things going on with, in the state with, you know, prevailing wage laws and healthcare and everything that seems to drive these rates. And unfortunately, everyone's dealing with kind of a shortage of quality substitute, I'm sorry, of quality bus drivers. And when there's a shortage, you know, you tend to have to pay them more. And then that drives up, you know, the rates as well. And I think, I think that is probably having probably the largest impact right now on the market, really over, you know, gasoline prices and different things going on with affordable healthcare and the new sick leave law act which was passed. Those certainly having a factor, but there's, we've just seen a, just, you know, just a shortage of quality drivers.
Yeah, I do feel like, like even if there is more competition, that prices wouldn't be all that much different because there's just a bottom level of the cost, so...
Right.
I think the only thing that gives me any hope at all is if you look at NRT. NRT's been somewhat reasonable. I mean, Wilmington has a contract that goes through '23. And it's only going up $10, $10 to 363 next year. You know, I mean, Wakefield, they were at was 333 last year. And so, you know, they have to, I've just seen negotiated and...
Same thing with Trump.
Yeah, the only one that looks quite a bit lower was highly dissatisfied as level of satisfaction. So, I mean, I think NRT seems to have been a good partner with us, and so hopefully they will be, you know, in the future. It seems like, it seems like they have some of the ones closest to us geographically. And so it might be, you know, I don't know, hopefully they like trying to keep this whole region and so...
Yeah, that's my hope as well. NRT is a larger company than some of these other companies on here. So sometimes they have a little bit more bargaining power with equipment and purchasing new equipment to keep a price a little bit lower than some of the smaller companies. That's what we saw five years ago.
So could we have a vote or a motion on, to accept? I mean, assuming that we want to accept the recommendation of Mr. Connolly?
Sure. I move that we exercise the optional fifth year of the regular school bus transportation contract to NRT from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Second?
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you.
I know, I mean, you do a great presentation. And I think, again, I think we need your skills for the next contract more than we need it for the recommendation today.
Right, no, thank you.
Next, the academic calendar, Dr. Daley. I mean, this usually goes pretty easily and quickly, so I'm just kidding.
Thank you so much for hearing this tonight. So as you recall, we presented this a few months ago. We had some discussion. We, it was suggested at the end that we take it back to our teachers' association just to float the idea of possibly doing a day or two before the school year started. Ultimately, it was a great conversation back and forth, but it was decided that we would just stay with the traditional after Labor Day start for everyone, including the teachers' professional day being in March. And so the calendar that you have before you preserves what I think was the intent of the committee, which was to have the students starting on Tuesday, I'm sorry, the students starting on Wednesday, the teachers and all the groups come back for the welcome back on the eighth. That does put our last day of school on the 29th of June, but I'm optimistic that... If there's five snow days, I'm right. I'm optimistic that we'll have a great winter next year and we'll be, we'll be in good shape. It's a little bit of an unusual year, but I do think it was, you know, and I think, I think I agree, John agreed also. You know, this is a tradition that we have here in North Reading, and I think it's one that's worth preserving. And the teachers, everyone felt that that was a good idea. I think they did appreciate the opportunity to talk about it a little bit more. I know that it was a great process, very democratic. They had some surveys and got data, and there was definitely a lot of discussion. But ultimately, this is where we are. But they, you know, they did, they did say for the future, they wanna continue to have some discussions. And we have some, some good opportunities to be creative here in the future as well, so...
Thank you, thank you very much. I just comment, I know there's been some discussion, I've seen some, I've been tagged in some Facebook forums about this. And I, I hope everybody understands when, unfortunately, when Labor Day falls on September 7th, it's a challenging calendar no matter what, because, you know, you know, it's later. And so it means you're either pushing it later and you're ending later in June, or you're starting before Labor Day. And I think, I think actually Chris said it very well when we had the discussion before, where, you know, if there's a reason that we can see to change what's been done in the past, I think we're all, you know, willing to make changes. But we've done this for however many years. I mean, it's, you know, Labor Day's fallen on September 7th before. And, you know, we've managed to get by with it before. And so, you know, absent some reason, I think it's nice for the community to understand that, you know, generally unless there's a specific reason, we're going to start after Labor Day. And I think that's what we're saying. So I appreciate the teachers considering it. And we weren't trying to make them decide they wanted to start before Labor Day if they didn't want to. Just, you know, I think just from the discussion before, we, you know, we felt that, I know that I felt that for, you know, parents that are planning on their summers, it's, you know, just nice to have a consistent idea year over year. Thank you very much for taking it back to the teachers. If there's no other discussion, can we have a motion to accept the 2021 academic school calendar?
Sure. I move to accept the school calendar for 2020 to 2021.
Second?
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to some routine matters here. So first, we have the minutes from the last meeting. So first, can somebody make a motion for the executive session of December 9th?
I'll make a motion to accept the executive session of December 9th as written.
I second.
Okay, and so Diana wasn't there, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so 4-0 with one abstention. And on the regular meeting of December 9th?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting, open meeting session of December 9th with the exception of when the motion was called back into open session, it was done so by Chris and myself as Mrs. Beltwell was not here.
We felt her presence though that day.
Why, thank you.
The only other exception I would make is technically I voted not to adjourn because I did not want to help Mr. Bernard leave, so...
No, no.
Technically, it was three... Technically it was three to one.
Thanks, Scott.
I just sent it on that one. Was that, I, I'm still, I, I still want to stay in session for that one, so. I voted three to one. Okay, we have a second. I mean, I did it, so.
For a second.
Yes, I do, sorry.
Okay. So with those corrections, any, any other comments or changes?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes four to zero with one abstention. Okay, moving on to the budget update. Mr. Connolly, you seem to have been spending a lot on coaches.
Yes. So, yeah, one, one quick note on the report and I apologize. I tried to update some of the numbers early last week before the packet went out to reflect activity as far through December as I could. And when I did that to a couple of numbers on the payroll side, the committed and the encumbered column didn't, didn't adjust as it should. So please don't be alarmed by two line items there, the extracurricular line item and the coaches line item. We are not running a deficit or a projected deficit there. So the, the committed column for the coaches should not read 213 and change, it should read 164 and change. And the extracurricular amount should, should not read 6918, it should read 52998. So that, that would bring those two line items in, in balance and it actually would make our available projected balance total, you know, higher, about 336,000. So I, I apologize for that. I was trying to update the numbers quickly before the packet went out last week and didn't pick up on that. But essentially the report is, is as typical, breaks it down into two reports, expenses and payroll activity. Essentially reflects as all financial activity through December 31, 2019, the end of the second quarter. Many of the budget drivers that I presented at the last report are still the same. I think we're in, you know, as you can see, solid financial standing midway through the fiscal year. As I spoke of earlier, we did experience some unanticipated maintenance costs during the first quarter of the year, mainly to redress replacement of three membranes at the wastewater treatment facility. We had to replace in the little school, elementary school main fire panel, that was unanticipated. And as we've gotten into the heating season, particularly at the little and hood elementary schools, we have had some high needs to address some heating equipment repairs, so that have been costly. So I will say, we've been able to address any of these unanticipated costs at this point through the, through the budget, you know, may, in part due to the assistance of the restored extraordinary maintenance line item this fiscal year. But I think it would just, I would just note that we perhaps have a lessened ability for the district to address unforeseen costs, particularly as it relates to, to the building and grounds area, but we'll just continue to monitor these costs as we move through the fiscal year.
And on that note, if I can, Michael, I mean, I think we not only, we, we went through the entire amount that we set aside in that
We did.
Extraordinary and, yeah, I mean, in years past that had been cut. I mean, I think that's something that I know I've been concerned about in the past on, you know, about when we, when we get rid of anything about, you know, anything that might go wrong, like we, we wrote, we walked a tightrope a few years and this year would have been disastrous if we didn't have that set aside. And I think that
We did.
When we're in the process of doing budgeting for the future, I think we need to be very careful because, you know, some of the, some of the equipment at some of the elementary schools in particular and that, you know, the wastewater treatment plant have some very high expenses and if it's on our budget, I think we, we don't ever want to be taking away from the educational
Exactly.
Cost in order to, you know, replace membranes at a wastewater
Right.
Treatment. And so I think we need to make sure
I agree.
That we have sufficient reserves because, again, that ate into educational money this year because those things needed to be replaced and went beyond what we had budgeted.
Yep, no, it's a good, it's a very good point, Mr. Buckley. So it's certainly, we've worked on, and we, we did a pretty good job in fiscal '20 restoring some of these line items to replace, place that reflected actuals where we felt we, we should be, but, you know, we're certainly, you know, seeing an increase in, in maintenance and building maintenance and grounds lines. We've, we've seen that at this campus, you know, to upkeep this campus as well as the wastewater treatment plant continues to be a high cost item that is only going, only increasing with, with the needs of that building, especially as, you know, some of that equipment, there's a lot of equipment in there, membranes, tubes, pumps, that have a five to seven year, you know, shelf life. And believe it or not, we're, we're, we're in the seventh year of the, of this building and that, that plant being in, on operation as we look till next year. So it'll certainly be important to look at what's, what's happening and, and in the elementary schools, some of this, the heating equipment and the HVACs and so forth, they're, they're older and, and some, and we're starting to see those break down and, and need some repairs. So I think when we look at our maintenance budget, when we look at things like extraordinary maintenance, which by law we're able to budget for, and then we look at small capital and equipment lines, which all lines that in these tough budget economic times have been either reduced or eliminated, these, to try to, to prioritize those and try to allocate funding in that area to, to address some of these, these needs. We've certainly encumbered all our utility expenses, we do that each year. You know, I, I would, I would be very excited if the weather we experienced this past week can continue over the next few months.
Too bad it didn't happen during school day, so we didn't have to.
Exactly, exactly. But, you know, we'll continue to monitor our utility costs and not see any, any cause for alarm, anything's going to be out of budget as we move, as we move through the fiscal year and certainly the heating season. The food service program continues to be a positive light of information where the first three months of the school year, the program has, has done very, very well. We've earned a net profit a little over $12,000. Still waiting for the final numbers of December. I think we did experience a loss in December. I usually get those about mid-month. December was a challenging month, it typically is. We lost two operating days, that's always a challenge, but I think we're still in very good shape about midway through the, the school year. Average mail sold per day almost at every school is up significantly at the middle school. High school continues to be up. The bachelor school is doing very, very well and the hood and the little are doing, responding well, pretty, pretty similar to last year. So we have breakfasts at each of the schools, that's, that's been doing okay. It's still not huge participation at the hood and the little, the bachelor a little bit, little bit greater. It's year two at the bachelor elementary school, but I think it's great that we're offering that as well. On the payroll side, everything is certainly within budgeted ranges. As I mentioned the last time, you're seeing some higher balances in certain line items than we've certainly had in the past and certainly the central office, mainly due to the central office, two central office support positions this year, kind of remain unfilled as, and we're certainly leveraging existing staff's roles to fill the responsibilities right now as we kind of evaluate the long-term solution. You know, we don't see that as being a, a, a long-term solution. There'll definitely be some areas as we approach, you know, fiscal '21 and get into these conversations to, to address, but, you know, we're certainly seeing as a result this fiscal year, at this point in the year, you know, balances in those line items, particularly in the business office support line and the technology support lines. You know, I think at this point in the year through, through December, which is the end of the second quarter, I think we're in solid financial standing. I think the next third quarter, particularly around what happens with any snow, snow costs and, and, and maintenance and utility costs will, will tell us a lot where we're going to be as we get into the final quarter, but I think we're in good, good position. Any, any questions?
I think these food service results are getting a little ho-hum, actually.
Yeah, I know.
Very positive every time.
Which is, which has been good.
Yeah, no, it's great. And my only, my only other joke, and, you know, I'm always, always bring the joke, is maybe we need to start charging a bathroom fee to build a reserve fund for the membranes and the
I know, I know.
I'm thinking outside the box, okay?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think, I mean, you, you don't think we're going to be on the school committee, that you're going to be, you know, having money taken away for, for the wastewater treatment?
Yeah, it wasn't, they, they didn't.
You know, or the
Wasn't, wasn't an issue there, I was really excited to do this.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure the superintendent loves managing that as well, so.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Dr. Daly, no staffing at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, and bids and donations?
Big numbers in the bids and donations. Chairman, I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from September to December from the LD Batch Elder Parent Organization totaling $7,149.45.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from September to December from the J. Turner Hood Elementary School Parents Association totaling $4,504.71.
I second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Just out of curiosity, did they give you any indication as to what the technology equipment was? Because if I remember correctly, they had donated X amount of funds towards Chromebooks or iPads in the last couple of months. So I didn't know if that was double duty or if there was something smaller tech that they were doing.
I believe, like, I'll look this up as, because I do have it noted on the, on the spreadsheet, but I, I do say, I want to say it went towards the Makerspace Materials Technology in, in that lab, the Makerspace Lab.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
They really do like the Makerspace over the hood school.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
See why?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from September to December from the E. Ethel Little Elementary School Parents Association totaling $5,041.07.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations from the above list of school activities and expenses from September to December from the Middle School Parents Association totaling $9,259.96.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from September to December from the High School Parents Association totaling $2,000.
Second.
Any discussion?
I assume that was the speaker that
Mm-hmm.
You just mentioned, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Nice work.
Intermission?
Yeah.
Intermission, very good PTOs?
Yes, well done, well done.
Okay, part two?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from Temple Fuel to be used towards the football program at the high school.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude $1,000 from the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame Association to be used by each school to purchase new fitness equipment as noted above for their participation in this year's Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot Race.
I second.
And for discussion, I think I'm supposed to point out that the little school won again, which is why they had the higher amount. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude $500 from the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame Association to be used to benefit North Reading High School Maskers Band Program for their participation in this year's Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot Race.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $5,000 from Nicole and Adam Griffith to be used towards the, at the principal's discretion at the middle school.
I second.
Okay, discussion on this one?
Um, might this be a good opportunity to invite them?
That's what I was just trying to say.
If they want to come in to shake our hand?
We can certainly reach out to them.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can we look into the feasibility of a giant check?
We like giant checks here. I think it's, this is extremely generous.
It really is.
And I just want to know what the principal's discretion is at the end.
Let's see, one, two, three, four, oh, there's five of us, look at that.
Hot tub scout, just kidding.
Right, but it's a wonderful gesture from, from people of the community. Support the schools.
I mean, just to remind people, the PTOs are 501(c)(3), so if you want to make donations, okay. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Give me a lot of tax advice today.
That's where, a lot of my donations go.
I move, things have changed the last couple of years, they may not be as valuable as they used to be. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Arch Painting to be used towards the Future Business Leaders of America Student Activity Club at the high school.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,620.50 from North Reading High School Lacrosse Boosters to be used towards girls lacrosse at the high school.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $50 from Kathleen Apigian to be used towards Thanksgiving baskets at the Batch Elder School.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And finally, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association and Cummings Properties to be used towards sensory programming at the high school.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. We have our specializations here, you know, Rich and Chris on the donations, Janine, this is the one that reads the minutes every week, so. Okay. Subcommittee update. Valuation Subcommittee met on January 9th. Particularly interested in this one.
Yeah, we had the honor of being the first Subcommittee meeting with Dr. Daly, Superintendent Daly, so that was fantastic. Basically, we kind of set up a rough timeline for what the superintendent's evaluation will look like over the next several months. We discussed the idea of using a new pilot system that the state has for, as a tool for that evaluation and, and went into a little bit of detail on, on what some of his goals will look like, but those will be forthcoming.
So I think this is probably based on the seminar that I think Rich and Janine and I all attended and I think the first part of that is proposing a certain number of tasks for the year, correct? I don't know, I'm probably not using right tech, the
The goals.
Yeah, the grid, like you have the goals that are certain, like three or five and, I mean, are we gonna, is there a timeline for doing that? I mean, is the goal to try to do an evaluation for this, the rest of this year and then do a full calendar year, 12 months the next year?
Yeah, and I think the goals are going to be more focused, I mean, you can speak
more to it, but the goals are going to be more focused for this initial period that ends in.
Yeah, so we're going to do an evaluation for the next.
Yes, and that was, yeah, and that was.
And that will be more focused on the transition, on the transition program you've been working on, right?
Yes, so the timeline that we proposed, there would be a full cycle from now until July. Then I would get back on a cycle of one year is from July to July, and that would kind of get me with my other peers that are in my first-year cohort, and, you know, when you're here more than 90 days, you do need to report scores to the state, so that would make sense, because we'd be reporting in July, and I want to be able to have an evaluation that would be done. So it's a little bit of a, you know, a timeline there. We kind of looked at a calendar where there was a formative assessment mid-year, around April, or maybe a little bit in May, because we want to be conscious of the budget-heavy meetings in April, but we do want to do that in public in maybe early May, we'll say. So I took some suggestions back from them, and I'll kind of propose, I would propose my goals at an upcoming meeting, either the next meeting or maybe the meeting right after, have all my goals laid out, along with sort of this basic timeline as well. And so, you know, a lot of those goals are based on the basics of, my proposed goals are going to be based on being a new superintendent, you know, and so part of, being a part of the new superintendent's induction program, and also with the DESI guidelines, they suggest one of the goals, being a part of that program is a goal in and of itself, and then all the steps that go along with that. Creating my entry plan and all the steps that are going along with the entry plan are part of the goal. So as I'm here to update on my entry plan, I'll also be meeting some of my goals. So it seemed to make a lot of sense to the Subcommittee, I thought, and so I would, I believe my next step then would be to propose those goals and sort of that timeline together in a public session.
Yes, and truncating, given that this is Dr. Daly's idea, truncating a year-long evaluation into the next six months really creates this opportunity, as Dr. Daly said, to line up his goals with getting into the position and starting to kind of set things up long-term. So it marries quite well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we have a report on the CIPC? Ms. Bellin, Mr. Connolly?
The school department presented our requests at the January 6th, last Monday evening's meeting, and I thought it went pretty well, the presentation was well-received. Dr. Daly and Dr. Downs were in attendance with me when we presented, and, you know, we focused on the technology requests as the top priority, but then definitely stressed the facility and the needs from our facility requests as well. As you may recall, we kind of focused on five, five requests for next year, and, you know, that process is just, you know, getting started, really. We're just underharing, all the departments are coming in and presenting. There was a meeting this evening, which I actually wasn't able to attend, but I know Diana, Diana was there. But we'll continue, that committee will continue to hear departmental presentations this month and beginning of next month, and we won't really get into ranking those until the beginning of March, so it's early on. Any questions?
The only thing worth noting is when we talked about the little school paving again, he said that Barberry Road was not on the horizon.
Right, that's true.
Or like the large paving initiative, so that would be kind of scaled back a little bit.
Yeah, so I don't know if it'll be the desire of the committee to try to align those projects, and it's been talked about in the past, but.
We'll see.
You know, hopefully, we will get it done.
I have my personal opinion, but I will keep that to myself for now. Okay, finance planning team. Ms. Embriano, do you want to update?
Gosh, it was so long.
We said, we said goodbye to Mr. Bernard.
Yeah.
They were, the Select Board and Finance Committee, and in particular, in particular, the Finance Director for the town, Liz, was very kind to go get them donuts and, yeah, Kane's Donuts and sandwiches for Mr. Bernard.
Boy, I wish I'd been invited for Kane's.
Yes.
I don't know.
Very good. We. Yeah, the one, the one thing I will say is that we did have the first presentation of numbers for next year, and as always, I think it'll be a tight budget. I think we, we have a good working dynamic there, I mean, trying to figure out, it's always hard when you have a lot of needs and not enough funds to fund all those, but I think the purpose of the finance planning team is to have all the leaders come together and really try to assess, you know, who, what needs are most, you know, most necessary, and so started that discussion just very preliminarily, and so, you know, let's just hope the final, let's just hope the preliminary numbers are not the numbers that we end up getting, because it would not be great.
Well, they are always very, very conservative in the beginning, so, and now that all of this talk, it's coming through, we had a discussion about the starting point from last year because of the fluid, the way that we've kind of revamped or that, and I thought it was, although it wasn't what some people thought, I thought it was a good starting point. It made sense in.
Yeah. I may not have been in complete agreement with everything that was said at the meeting, so.
But, no, she, they're very conservative, so even, I think, I think we'll be okay. Always positive.
Okay. And the Budget and Finance Subcommittee met today before the meeting, and so, I don't know if Diana, want to talk about it?
Yeah, sure. No, we just spoke briefly about some work that has been done around energy efficiency, both in solar options as well as LED, and some work that Michael's putting together for potential proposal to sort of circulate and discuss preliminarily with some town representative, representatives. And then we didn't have a lot of time to spare at the end, but we started to look a little bit at the budget, but we got cut off to make sure we were here on time, so I think we'll look at that coming in the next meeting.
Yeah, and I mean, I would just reiterate, I think, I think Michael's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, and I'm extremely excited. I mean, I would say of all the things that I've seen in the last almost three years on this committee, it's probably the one thing that excites me the most about, just because it's new, it's different, and we've had times before where we've talked about how can we get LED, you know, lights in every building, and I think Mr. Connolly might have a way in which we can do a combined project with both solar and LED where, you know, where the one helps the other, and so like, I mean, the idea of this combined project where it would take very little funds upfront and pay back in just a few years would be wonderful. And so if this can come to fruition, I think it'll be a no-brainer for everybody, and so I hope that it works, so thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
And then I can borrow your expertise from my house. Chairman, if I may?
Of course.
We also had a policy Subcommittee meeting on December 12th.
That didn't make the cut this week.
What's that?
That didn't make the cut this week, I apologize.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we had our, well, will probably be the last one for at least several months, because Mr. Bernard achieved his goal of getting through the entire manual, so I just, we just wanted to give you that quick update, so. We had no changes from that meeting, so I don't think we're done with.
Are there any outstanding from previous meetings that haven't been brought before?
I think we're cut up.
Unless we had a, did we have a first reading? I guess I should.
Yeah, we have the minutes from the last time, but I don't, I don't recall the last meeting.
I believe we're caught up, but I can double-check, yeah.
Well, thank you. Okay, Subcommittee schedule. Substance Abuse Coalition meets January 15th at 10:00 a.m. at the North Reading Police Station. NORcam Board of Directors meets January 23rd at 7:00 p.m. at the NORcam Office. Finance Planning Team meets January 31st at 8:15 a.m. at the Superintendent's Conference Room. Athletic Subcommittee, February 26th, 12:30 p.m. at the Superintendent's Conference Room. And the Fine Arts Subcommittee, February 26th at 2:30 p.m. at the Superintendent's Conference Room. For an administrative report, Dr. Daly, do you have anything for us?
I do, I'm just going to pass this along.
Thank you.
So again, I'm very excited, I'm enjoying my first few days here on the job, actually, and I think I gave away all my copies. There we go. The first thing that I have is the annual, the administrative report for the NEC and the SEAM Collaborative Executive Directors Reports. So I have copies of the annual report for SEAM that I will pass around here for folks to see, and then there's also one copy, this is for the NEC Consortium, and also what goes to our chairs here, so I'm going to just pass this around. These are for the two collaborations that we're part of.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
The, sorry to do you really right away, but is Mr. Bernard the appointed representative to anything that we have to do, that we should do a new appointment? Because I think we've appointed him as a representative to certain committees, so do we, maybe at the next meeting, we can appoint you officially?
Yeah, officially, yep.
I don't know if you have the list of those, but if you could.
Well, this is definitely one of them.
Those are, those are just one big set, yeah.
Okay. Well, that looks like multiple.
One of the committees recently approved, gave him to the end of December and planned to be on.
Yeah, beyond, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if there's anything that we have to officially appoint, that we've done that, so.
We'll double-check all that, so thank you very much.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, great. Any questions? It's just one packet.
But there's only one copy of it.
The NEC one is one large.
Yeah.
So this just comes.
I believe that's just a packet there for the.
It seems to be unique from all of the others, with only one copy of it.
Yes. Okay. We have what we need.
All right. I thought I would note that we had a visit today from our Associate Commissioner from the Department of Education, came to visit the school, and together we, he and I toured the middle and high school campus. Were able to visit many classrooms and visit with students and teachers, we saw some wonderful, some of the same things we saw tonight, actually, it was great. We saw Mr. Ledoux's class outside doing some physics experiments, it was a ninth-grade class. We got down to the TV studio, we saw our STEM, it sort of, it sort of took on a STEM theme, it wasn't really intended that way, but that's just how it sort of took place. We saw our construction design class with the, with the high school class, the theater design class, which is a great example of really, you know, that real-world stakes STEM project in action. We popped up to an English class, we saw our RISE program, and so it was just a great opportunity to get around and see the schools, and he was very impressed with what he saw, and had a lot of great things to say about the teaching and learning going on at North Reading. It was also nice to give a tour of the building, it's been a little while since I've done that, I felt like I did so many up front, and it was, you know, just to take him in and show him this space even was really impressive, so. It was a very informal visit, wasn't anything, there was more, this is a person that knows me, wanted to come and wish me well, and we kind of walked around and saw the building, but it was a great opportunity to do so. The next item is just an update on the report card delivery at the North Reading Middle School. For quite some time, we've been doing our progress reports through electronic digital channels. In many schools in the area, I've done all of their communication report cards and everything through a secure portal, login portal. The middle school is ready and prepared to disseminate their report cards digitally through the parent portals. This is the first time that the report cards themselves will be sent home this way, but we think that both parents and teachers and administrators are very excited about this opportunity. It's a, in many ways, a more secure channel than the previous sort of sending them home with students in backpacks. We think that with our one-to-one initiative with our Chromebooks, I was speaking with Principal O'Connell about this, we feel that students are conditioned to routinely check plus portals, to see their grades, to see their averages, to communicate that way, and it makes sense for it to come full circle and to see their final report cards that way. It's more efficient, it's, you know, environmentally friendly, less paper, and really the direction that we're trying to move in here, and so I did support that idea, and I think that's a pretty exciting development there at the middle school. For anyone that has any issues and needs to have a hard copy or something printed, we have all the appropriate steps there, and she has taken many steps to communicate with parents and will continue to do so about this change and about this, the proper way to log in. But we feel that parents are already conditioned to be routinely checking for grades and assignments, progress reports, and now this is sort of the next logical step. And I, I do think that as this, if this proves to be a success, we may look at this in other areas as well, because we've really been shifting since before I was here even to some of these portals and some of this communication, so it makes sense now to do others this way as well. As an update on the Assistant Superintendent position, I've shared and communicated with staff, the faculty, the administration, also with the parents of the community. I posted on our website, which then anyone who subscribed gets that email as well, it was picked up, it was in the transcript also, about the letter that I wrote to the community. And so, just to update on the Assistant Superintendent position, the plan there is to, my former position, is to post that job in the spring, but at this time, we have different administrators who are taking some of the work, and we've divided up into some stipends that are associated with the position, but a decision that I made and that we discussed was that, you know, I really wanted some folks that are interested to get a sense of the whole. And so Mr. Colleen, in addition to Ms. O'Connell and Dr. Downs, are doing some of the work, but Mr. Colleen will be doing a majority of duties, he'll also be doing a lot of the responsibilities where he needs to go out and get information and bring it back and help share that with us. He's been very good at communicating also with the Bachelader School, we have a great plan in place there, because he's going to maintain those duties, spend some time up at the central office, but also continue to be visible and completely accessible. We've worked it all out technologically, I mean, physically, he's pretty close to his school, but I think technologically, all his voicemails, emails, everything forwarded when he is here, and he's very responsive, and he's very, as always, very concerned with making sure that, you know, he's still accessible no matter what role he's in, whatever hat he's wearing that day. And it's been great, we've had a few meetings with central office to discuss some of the changes, and it's been great. So I'm keeping the office that I'm in, that's one thing, so if you're looking for me, you would still come into the central office, check in at the front desk, but I was now in the back office, so it was a little different office space than where Superintendent Bernard was. And I, you know, I welcome anyone to visit and to come by and to meet on any issues that they may have. The E. Ethel Little School Blue Ribbon Ceremony, as we know, we're very excited about that ceremony, which is on Monday, January 27th at 9:30 a.m. We're going to have some great speakers there, and we're very excited to be celebrating the Blue Ribbon Award, a very prestigious award for the little school. The, the next item that I have on this list is the Charles, I'm just going to skip to the Charles Jones Award, which is the Charles Jones Excellence in Education Award will also be awarded on Monday, January 27th. That ceremony is at the high school, we're going to try for around 11:45 a.m., and Mr. Bernard had sent out a nice memo to the whole school community, that recipient, Mr. Votto, is being recognized for the first Charles Jones Award.
Do you have any desire to have guests there? Because I have to take the day off for the little school and the negotiation and everything else. Is that open to the public or not?
There are some, if you're interested in attending, you can, you can connect with me, and I can try to arrange that. It's sort of a smaller.
I didn't know.
Scale presentation, but we can certainly have you there, Mr. Brookley. We have some arrangements, it's just a small ceremony out in the main street sort of during the school day for the ceremony. I know that, I believe Mr. Bernard will be here as well, and Claudia Brown, who is presenting the award and has worked on this, will be there. There'll be a few other friends and family, Mr. Jones there, Mr. Votto, and some others there as well, so you're more than welcome to attend, anyone that would like to attend, absolutely.
Yeah, I would just put it in my calendar.
Yeah, absolutely. The last item that I had on this list is the cybersecurity grant. I don't believe this has been shared with you yet. It's a grant program, and I just want to clarify that there's no money coming into the school system, which was, Michael's first question to me was, you know, what lines do I need to open up? It's a grant in terms of, we're not paying anything for what we're going to receive, so they're covering the cost of this. This is from the Governor's Office, I shared a statement for you there, but I think as we know, cybersecurity is not only a technological awareness that we need, but it's also a real safety issue, and I think some of the things that we read about in the news, and just last night I was reading about a school in Texas, I think, that had a, you know, ransomware, they took over the school, they hold all of the documents hostage, and it can really be quite a situation. So this program is from the Governor's Office, and it involves modules, starting with basic safety, understanding phishing scams, password protection, and so there's a series of modules that our school staff will participate in. There are also drills where they will get some sample phishing-type emails that they will have to interact with appropriately. So if they click on it, and it has, if they should not have clicked on it, it'll come up with like a big oops, you know, and it'll give them sort of a lesson learned, had this been a real phishing email, these are the things that could have happened, and we'll sort of direct folks to some other modules from there. The way we're going to design this, we're going to make sure that it's all done on time, that's contractual time, I've spoken with both of our unions, because that was a concern I had, because this project from the time we applied for the grant to where it is now has sort of grown in scope. And so everything they're doing is great, they've really enhanced it in a lot of ways, but we want to make sure that it's not exhaustive for folks. So there's a certain amount that will be required, that we will give some time, possibly professional development or faculty meetings, things like that, but then we'll have some other incentives for folks to opt in for the entire program. But all of our school staff will be involved in the drill, so they will all receive emails, and all they have to do is respond to it as they typically would. When they see an email, they should be ignoring it, not clicking on it, not entertaining it. There are some reports that we'll receive as a district that we'll be able to analyze, you know, how many folks interacted with the email, how many did it correctly, and some advice for us and some steps for us to take. So I think in a, in a world where there's constant threats of, you know, ransomware, phishing attacks, you know, that we're concerned of, I think it's great for us. We're definitely going to require this for certain members, and we're going to talk to those members, some of our technology staff, digital learning team, I think certainly the business office, you know, we've had, we're well aware of things that happened in the past year with, you know, emails coming to business officers asking to redirect people's pay stubs to other places, and Michael and I are aware of a few districts people's pay stubs to other places, and Michael and I are aware of a few districts that may have done that by mistake, and those are pretty serious things that, you know, didn't exist a few years ago, and now they're pretty prominent. So we think it's an exciting program, we're glad to be a part of it, and this really